Good morning, Mr. Witnesses. You are welcome to this commission. Good morning, Mr. Witness. Welcome to this Commission of Inquiry. I begin by asking, what is your name? What is your religion? In which language do you wish to make your testimony?
English.
English. Do you wish to swear or make an affirmation? Swear. Madam Chair, the witness wishes to swear on the Holy Ground.
Very well, you can proceed to swear him.
Okay, Mr. Witness, please. Place your hand on the Holy Ground. And repeat after me. I, Modus Cice, do swear. I will speak the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God. So help me God. You may be seated, please. Good morning, Mr. Witness. Welcome to the Commission of Inquiry. What is your name? What is your religion? Do you wish to swear or make an affirmation? An affirmation. Madam Chair, the witness wishes to make an affirmation.
Very well, you can proceed to swear him in the Holy Ground.
Please repeat after me. I... Affirmation. Raise your hand. You raise your hand. I, Bakari Trawalie, do affirm that I will speak the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God, you may be seated, please. Madam Chair, the witness is sworn.
Thank you, Mr. Mbalo. We can now have Allah Jezzila to lead us in the Muslim prayers and Mr. Oremi Jwene to lead us in the Christian prayers. Thank you.
Allahu Billah iman wa shaytan wa rehim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulilahi rabbil ‘alamin. Arrahmani rahim. Maliki yu'middin. Iya kana'budu wa iya kana'sta'in. Idina siraat al mustahim. Siraatalladzi na'alamta alihim. Khairil ma'dubbi alihim waladzoolim. Warisan waasixan. Warisan waasixan. Warisan waasixan. Mubarakan. 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 Awlumta il waziatu padani. Allahumma atta khruu banabi ala ilmi. A'udzubillah iman sharin sahi. Wamin sayyisayatin. Wasultani allah. Inna allahumma laikatu yusallu al nabi'ah. Alladzi na'amanu sallu allih wa sallim wa taslima. Sallallahu ta'ala allih wa ala allih wa sahibi wa salaama taslima. Bi'armatallahumussalili ala zeena muhammad. Il fathiq ilima uhlika walakhatim ilima asabah al nazir. Haqib al haqib wal hadi. Ila siraatika al mustahim wa ala allih haqqa qadrin. Humidha adzin. Subhanarrbikarbi izziati amayzifun. Wasala mun ala al musalina. Walhamdulilahi rabbil 'alamin. Fatiha.
Mr. Jana?
In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Ghost. Amen. May God bless us. May God guide us and support us. May God always be with us. May God always ease our difficulties. May God give us strength in weakness. May God give us light in darkness. May God give us hope in despair. May God give us the peace wherever we go. And may God grant us success in all our undertakings. This we ask through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Thank you for those prayers, Honorable Commissioners. I will now hand over Miss Cox to take the witness through.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairperson, Commissioners, Witnesses. I just wish to point out for the record that we have two witnesses today from the National Audit Office as permission was previously sought to have them be taken together. Start with Mr. Modus Cice. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Modus Cice, I live in Saint-Jean-Argie, Costa Rica.
And what is your occupation?
Auditor General.
Where? Auditor General, what office, sir?
National Audit Office, Gambia.
Thank you. Now, you provided a statement to the investigators, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And you made the statement yourself?
Yes.
Let me show you the statement. Statement. Is this the statement that you give?
Yes.
Do you adopt the statement as part of your evidence before this commission?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Chairperson, I apply to tender the statement of the witness, Modus Cice.
The statement of... Sorry, let me just get the Commissioners to review.
Okay.
The witness statement of Modus Cice is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as MC001.
As the commission pleases. Mr. Trawalie, could you kindly state your names for the record?
Thank you. My name is Bakari Trawalie.
Thank you. And where do you live?
I live in Bundung.
In where, sorry?
Bundung, Bundung.
Thank you. What is your occupation and where do you work?
Director of Audit, National Audit Office, responsible for municipalities and areas.
You provided a statement to the investigators, is that correct?
Yes.
And did you prepare the statement yourself?
Yes.
Let me show you a statement. Do you confirm that that is the statement that you prepared?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairperson, I apply to tender the statement of Bakari Trawalie into evidence.
Very well.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. I forgot to ask, do you adopt the statement as your evidence, part of your evidence before the commission?
Yes.
Thank you.
The witness statement by Bakari Trawalie is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as BT002.
As the commission pleases. Mr. Cice, could you please give to the commission just a summary of your educational and professional background?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I was educated at High School, Gambia High School, and then went on to the University of Gambia to obtain a BSc in Economics and proceeded to London College of Accountancy where I obtained ACCA. I also did some other professional qualifications such as Certified Internal Audit Qualification and Certified Examiner's Qualification and currently pursuing a MSc degree.
Thank you. And your professional history?
Professional qualification, I mentioned it.
No, you're, as in where have you worked?
I worked as Finance Manager, starting my career with the Eltin Oil Den Gambia Limited and proceeded to the Accountant General Department as Principal Accountant, then proceeded to the Internal Audit as Director of Internal Audit and later Director General of Internal Audit and currently Auditor General.
Eji. And how long have you been the Auditor General of the National Audit Office?
Since December 2020, November 2022.
Thank you. Mr. Trawalie, could you please provide a summary, give us a summary of your educational and professional background?
2001. Then went to Gambia Technical Training Institute, GTTI, for one year where I did my AAT Level 1. I later proceeded to Management Development Institute, MDI, for my AAT Level 2 and 3. That is where I got my qualification as Accounting Technician. Then I later proceeded, started my ACCA at same MDI. I did my ACCA Level 1 and Level 2 at Management Development Institute. Later proceeded in 2010 to Finance and Business Training School in UK Birmingham, United Kingdom. That's where I did my ACCA final level and qualified as a Chartered Accountant.
Thank you. And your professional background?
In January 2003, I was appointed as an Accounts Clerk at Accountants General Department. I worked for Accountant General Department up to March 2014. I then requested for a transfer of service. My service was transferred from Accountant General to National Audit Office in April 2014 and that is where I am working from 2014 to date, I am working at the National Audit Office. I rose through the rank as an Assistant Audit Manager, Audit Manager, Senior Manager, and currently the Director of Audit.
Thank you. Now, can you tell us what the National Audit Office does? What is its role?
The National Audit Office was established on Section 159 of the 1997 Constitution of the Republic of the Gambia as a Supreme Audit Institution to assist the Auditor General performance of the functions conferred on him or her by the Constitution of the Gambia. The Auditor General has the responsibility for audit of all accounts of the government institutions, local government authorities, and the public bodies. And the functions of the Auditor General are also described in details in the Constitution of the Gambia. Pope, to summarize, the Auditor General Office is responsible for the audit of all accounts of the public fund, including the government institutions, the parastates, and the local councils, and all the project.
Okay. And in conducting these audits, what types of audits does ANO conduct?
Basically, National Audit Office conducted three main types of audits: financial audits, performance audits, and compliance audits.
And are those the only types of audits that are usually conducted? Or is that just the ones that National Audit conducts?
Yes, so these are the three main types of audit conducted. Any other audit assignment will either fall under this category, either financial, performance, or compliance.
And are these financial, performance, and compliance audits, are they statutorily mandated audits?
Yes, these are statutorily mandated audits.
Okay. Can you explain to us what these different types of audits entail?
Yeah. Financial audit, this is where, you know, you auditors review the financial transactions of institutions and express an opinion whether the financial transactions are true and fair. Performance audit, this is where you look at whether the institutions are operating in accordance with the three, that's economy, economically, efficiently, and effectively, called the value for money.
Okay.
And compliance audit, this is basically you look at whether the institutions are operating in accordance with the laws and regulations.
Thank you. So what are forensic audits then?
Forensic audit is basically investigative audit. This is usually when there is alleged fraud, then the Auditor General can set up a team to go and conduct a forensic audit. Forensic audit is more of an investigation.
Okay. Now, you have said in your statement that you are the Director of Audit for Municipalities and Area Councils.
Yes.
Now, how long have you been Director of that unit?
I've been the Director of that unit for four years, from 2019 to date.
Okay. Now, why, can you tell us what the purpose is of having an external auditor such as the National Audit Office?
Yeah. I think the purpose of, if, I don't know whether I will have the liberty at some point if I want to get to the Auditor General.
Yes, yes.
Okay, then that's fine.
Thank you. The purpose of the National Audit Office is to serve as the external auditors of the government of the Gambia. In requirement for accountability, it's part of the accountability mechanisms that the national governments or local governments or public bodies are statutorily required to be audited to provide assurances as to the mandates or as to the resources that were given to them to execute particular functions have been executed in the manner it was envisaged and described. So the auditors provide assurance to the National Assembly as the representatives of the people on how the use of resources dedicated to public offices have been executed. In summary, that would be the purpose and it is enshrined as earlier stated in Section 159 of the Constitution of the Gambia. Thank you.
Thank you. And how are the audits conducted? Is it retrospectively?
Yeah. Audit is conducted in areas, if you're because, for example, when it's financial statement audit, for example, before you can audit a financial statement, the transactions must take place and then prepare the financial statement or the records and then the auditors then go and then review those transactions and form an opinion and express an opinion on them. So audit is always conducted in area.
Okay. And who prepares the financial statements?
It's the responsibility of the management of the institutions to prepare the financial statement.
Okay. So were you involved in the audit of the local government councils between the periods 2018 and 2023?
Yes, maybe for, yeah, the period 2018 to 2019, yes, I'm involved in the audit, yeah.
To 2023?
To 2023, yes. Even though the 2023 accounts are yet to be audited, but of the 2022, some of the councils are audited of the 2021, 2023 accounts are not yet ready for audit.
Okay. And this is for all the councils?
Yeah, this for all the councils. I'm involved in the audit of all the councils.
Okay. So can you tell us how the audits are conducted from the initiate, from the beginning to the end?
All right. Maybe I just want to make some clarification. Before, before the establishment of this unit, Municipalities and Area Councils, National Audit Office has always been auditing the area councils, but there was no unit established to focus only on the audit of area councils. So other directories will go and conduct this audit. Maybe this, you can say, Basay Area Council Director, he can go and conduct it, Director of it. But we've seen that there are a lot of work to be done as far as these area councils are concerned. That was the reason why in 2019 they established a special unit, you know, to focus on the audit of these municipalities and area councils. So the unit was established in 2019. This process starts with planning. For example, if you are to, we have a plan for the whole office, all the unit. Because the office comprises of, comprises of five units. That is the Ministries and Departments, that's the central government, you have a unit responsible for that. You have the Municipalities and Area Councils, that focus on the local councils, that's where I am heading. You have Development and Projects, that focus on, mostly on donor-funded projects and some of the local funded projects. Extraneous Unit, this is responsible for the audit of subvented institutions. And Performance Audit Unit, that's the unit responsible for the value for money audit, if you like. They look at the efficiency, effectiveness, and economic of the, how resources have been used. The audit will start from planning because planning takes most of our time and then as an office, we always plan how to conduct audit for all these, all the institutions because the Auditor General has the mandate to audit all the public fund, but you know practically it's not possible for the Auditor General to audit all this within a year and report. So that is where planning is key and then we use Ricks-based approach. When it comes to narrow that down to the area councils, this planning for the year, we said this period to this period, we will be at this area council. This period to this period, we will be at this, this particular area council. And we don't just sit and determine like that, we will be at KMC, we will be at this, but we will look at the Ricks-based approach. In this, we consider the budget, the budget allocation, or how much revenue is KMC generating and then we make sure that we plan in accordance with the revenue that they are receiving or the budget. And then also the Ricks by looking at the prior year, that is the previous year's audit finding, negative finding, and also the public perception. If I told there is a public outcry about a particular area council, we will know that the Ricks for that council is high. So we'll make sure that we prioritize them in our planning. When we did that planning for the year, then we will send an engagement letter. If we are to audit any particular council, we will send an engagement letter. But before you send an engagement letter, you will form your team because it doesn't mean that the whole team will go to Carnegie Municipal Council, for example, but we will look at the, we will form the team and that team formation, you will look at, okay, what is the nature of Carnegie Municipal Council, the revenue, the Ricks involved, and then that will determine the caliber of staff that has to be in that audit team. And then we will send an engagement letter. The engagement letter will describe the terms and conditions of the audit, how the audit is going to be conducted, the documents that we will request from the, from the council, the time, the day we will have the entrance meeting, and then, and so forth. That letter will be sent to them to specify the terms and condition of the audit. When they receive our engagement letter, they will acknowledge that they have received our engagement letter, then we will go for an entrance meeting. Entrance meeting, we'll go with the team to introduce the team to them. These are the team members that are going to conduct the audit and the objective of the audit and the timeline, when we will have this, we need this, we need the documentation, and then request for a space. And then we don't even start the audit if they don't sign that engagement letter to say we've acknowledged and then, you know, we are ready to receive the team, then we will begin the audit. During the audit, we have what we call the field work. The planning will be done, we request for some of their documentations, and then we start the field work. The field work is where, you know, we will start reviewing the files, conduct interview if necessary, get information from different people, review the file, and then request for documentation. Normally, this will take some time, we'll be there, we'll give them the opportunity. If anybody has anything that you want to bring it to the attention of the auditors, we will welcome you and we will have key stakeholders that we will also find, inquire, make inquiries, and then interview them just to make sure that we get enough information because audit is also based on sampling. We don't go and audit each and every transaction, but it's based on sampling. So that is the field work. After the field work, we will have an exit meeting. This exit meeting is where we will discuss the findings that the audit team came up with during the field work and we will discuss it with the management. And we will go back to our office and draft, and draft an audit report. This draft, no other stakeholder is copied, it's only our office and the management. The draft will tell you these are the findings and we will give them an opportunity to respond, for management to respond. So when management go through that, normally we will give them one month, three weeks, depending on the volume of the findings, and then they will respond. If they respond, we will incorporate their response in our report and then review it and then finalize the audit, audit. So the final report is where all the stakeholders are copied. So this is just to say, audit is always consultative. So this is just to say, audit is always consultative. ... to provide any explanation or documentation before we conclude the audit. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, you have said that you conduct your audit by sampling, you do not go through each and every transaction. How, how do you do this sampling?
Yeah, um, sampling is a method, uh, that the auditors will prepare, because like, as, as, that's why councils, because if you look at the audit, you have the management. These are the people, management has the responsibility to put a mechanism in place, whereas they will be looking at internal controls on a daily basis. Among that, that's why they have internal auditors. So external auditors, that is why, because for us, it's just to give a reasonable, uh, uh, assurance. That's why for us, when we come, we look at a sample, it will depend on the sample method you are taking. Uh, you can look at the vouchers, for example, depending on the risk nature of the, the risk nature of the, of, of, of the institution, and then that will determine your sample. But this sample is by the standard, this is based on the auditing standard, the profession, then that's what we will use. When we said, you cannot, if I told there are hundred vouchers here, you don't expect to go into each and every voucher, but maybe your sampling will be like vouchers, any payment that is above five thousand, we will look at that. So any payment that is less than two hundred or three hundred, we will not, we will not look at that. So that is how, you know, sampling is conducted. And if you are requesting for the files, for example, instead of hundred files, you can take seventy files or eighty files and review that, just to make sure that you have an idea or a bit is about what is happening in the institution. Agi?
And, um, when you're going to conduct the audit, do you have any, what is the interaction between the NAO and the internal audit department or unit of the area councils, if any?
Yes, um, the internal audit are like our, because the internal audit, they are part of the institution. They are there to help the management of the area councils, to strengthen those internal controls before the National Audit is coming. Because National Audit is based on sampling, and then we spend very little time. So that's why when, but the first point of this thing will be, the internal audit, if you look at their manuals, they're supposed to report on a quarterly basis. So when National Audit Office get there, we will review, we will request for the reports from the internal auditor, and then that internal audit report, we will review it, that will give us the pointers to know what are some of the internal control weaknesses happening in this institution. And we make sure that we also work with the internal audit personals at the council to give us some inside information that are happening at the council. So it's like we collaborate, we collaborate, they are like our, our, our focal person as far as the audit is concerned. We work closely with them.
And, um, in your experience, have, have, or have the internal audit, um, unit of the various municipality been sending quarterly reports as required?
Um, most of, most of the councils, this is a challenge. Uh, you request for the internal audit reports, reports are not available. Some, maybe the whole year, they might just give you one, and then it, it, it might be very scanty. So there is limitation, there is limitation.
And is, is there anything that, um, your office is able to do to compel them to provide the reports as required?
Yeah, the only thing, when this happen, we just, um, we, we, this comes as an observation in our report that according to so-and-so manual, the internal auditor is supposed to prepare reports on a quarterly basis, but during our review, we realize that they are not doing that, or maybe they only did it once, and then come up with recommendations, so that, you know, the management should, and so that they produce reports according to the policy, policy document. So we only recommend.
Okay, um, let me show you some of the audit reports that we have received. Are you able to identify those reports?
Yes, yes, I'm able to, yeah.
Can you tell us which documents those are?
This is the audit of Carnegie Municipal Council for the period first April twenty seventeen to thirty-first December twenty nineteen. And the other one is, uh, audit report and final management letter for Carnegie Municipal Council for the year ended thirty-second twenty and December, so, and twenty twenty-one.
And they were prepared by your office?
Yes, they are prepared by our office.
And you personally signed off on those reports?
Say again?
You signed off on those reports?
Yes, I signed these reports on behalf of the Audit General, yes.
Thank you. Chairperson, I'd like to tender the audit reports for Carnegie Municipality that have been identified by the witness.
Very well, council. The audit report of, um, KMC for the period ended first April twenty seventeen to thirty-first December twenty nineteen, dated third of December twenty twenty, with reference number HC nine-three slash four-seven-five slash zero-one, Part Four, Volume Eleven, is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as AR slash, um, KMC slash zero-zero-one.
As the commission pleases.
The, um, audit report for, um, Carnegie Municipal Council, um, for the years ended thirty-first December twenty twenty and thirty-first December twenty twenty-one, dated on the ninth of February twenty twenty-three, with reference number HC nine-three stroke four-seven-five stroke zero-one, Part Four, Volume Fifteen, is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as K, um, AR slash KMC slash zero-zero-two.
As the commission pleases, I'm grateful. Mr. Travelli, I'm going to show you some other reports. Please identify those reports.
Yes, um, this is the audit report for Kuntawur Area Council for the period first January to thirty-first December twenty eighteen. And the other one is the audit report and final management letter for Kuntawur Area Council for the period, um, December, first January twenty nineteen to thirty-first December twenty twenty.
And these are prepared by your office?
Yes.
And signed off by you?
Um, it, it was signed by, the, the one for twenty eighteen was signed by myself, uh, but the one for twenty twenty was signed by one of my staff in my department, because I wasn't around by them.
Okay, but it is your?
Yes, yes, yeah, it was, he signed on my behalf, the Audit General, yeah.
Thank you. Chairperson, I'd like to tender the audit reports that have been identified by the witness.
Very well, council. The, um, audit report for Kuntawur Area Council, um, for the year ended, um, for the period first January, um, thirty-first, first January to thirty-first December twenty eighteen, with reference number HC slash ninety-three slash four-seven slash zero-one, Part Two, Volume Fifty-nine, and dated eleventh of March twenty twenty, is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as, um, AR slash KAC slash zero-zero-one. The audit report for Kuntawur Area Council for the period thirty-first December twenty nineteen to thirty-first December twenty twenty, with reference number HC nine-three slash four-seven slash zero-one, Part Three, Volume Zero-Four, and dated twentieth of October twenty twenty-two, is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as, um, KAC slash, um, zero-zero-two.
As the commission pleases. Mr. Travelli, I'm going to show you some more reports. Please identify those reports.
Yes, uh, the final management letter and audit report for Brikama Area Council for the period, oh, for the peri-, sorry. For the period, uh, first October twenty seventeen to thirty-first December twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Yes, it was signed by myself.
Okay.
You have the audit of Brikama Area Council for the year ended thirty-first December, from January to thirty-first December twenty nineteen, of Brikama Area Council, of, also signed by myself on behalf of the Audit General.
Thank you.
Audit of Brikama Area Council and final management letter for the period first January twenty twenty to thirty-first December twenty twenty-one, signed by, uh, myself on behalf of the Audit General.
Thank you. Chairperson, I'd like to tender the audit reports for Brikama Area Council as identified by the witness.
Very well. Are these all for Brikama? For the, sorry, okay, thank you. The, um, may I just find out from the, um, from council, whether this, um, this is an audit report or is the final management letter?
I think we would need to ask the witness.
Can you take it to the witness to confirm whether it's an audit report or the final management letter?
Um, this is a final management letter. Uh, do you know, my name, yeah, it's, it's a management letter, final management letter.
Yes, um, did that accompany any report?
Uh, no, you know, the, because this, if you look at the, the scope is twenty seventeen, maybe we'll come to that, twenty seventeen, by then, councils, we are not preparing financial statement.
Very well.
But we still go into, look at their transactional report, that's what we call management letter.
That's the correct.
Yeah, so maybe you can just, this will show in there, for the period twenty seventeen to this.
The, um, final management letter for the period first October twenty seventeen to thirty-first December twenty eighteen, um, dated the eighteenth of September twenty nineteen, um, is hereby, with reference number, sorry, with reference number HC nine-three stroke four-seven-three stroke zero-one, um, stroke Part Three, um, Volume Fifteen, is hereby admitted and marked as, um, ML stroke Brikama Area Council, that is BAC stroke zero-zero-one. The, um, the audit report for the year ended thirty-first December twenty nineteen, with reference number HC nine-three stroke four-seven-three stroke zero-one stroke Part Three, Volume Twenty-two, dated twenty-fifth of February twenty twenty-one, is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as AR stroke, um, BAC stroke zero-zero-two. The audit report and final management letter for the period first January twenty twenty to thirty-first Jan-, December twenty twenty-one, with reference number HC nine-three slash four-seven-three slash zero-one, Part Five, Volume Four, uh, dated the twenty-sixth of October twenty twenty-two, is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as AR slash BAC slash zero-zero-three.
As the commission pleases, I'm grateful. Now, Mr. Travelli, you have indicated that the audit report and the management letter are not the same. Can you tell us what each one is for?
Um, yes, um, you know, um, before the area councils, they don't even prepare, even though by law, they're supposed to prepare a financial statement for us to express an opinion. The financial statement will show the balance sheet, so the assets and liabilities, the income and the revenue, and then that's where the auditors will express an opinion, that's what we call the audit report. And then besides that, you have the management letter. The management letter will detail the internal control weaknesses and the performance issues here and there, so it goes with the audit report. But whereas they've not been preparing financial statement, that doesn't prevent National Audit Office from carrying out our audit exercise. We will go there and look at the internal control weaknesses that are happening in the council, and then report, that's what we call management letter. So around twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, they have not been preparing financial statement, but we will still go and then, you know, highlight those internal control issues, and including the lack of preparation of financial statement, and then report to management, that's what is called management letter. But if you look at the recent audits, at least, they are preparing the financial statement, whether they are credible or so, that is something else. But that's why you, latest one, you will see audit report and management letter.
Thank you. Um, so does that mean that for the periods twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, you did not actually audit the finances, just the systems?
We audited the finances, the financial transactions, because they are making payments, they were raising payment vouchers, they are, you know, collecting revenue. So we will still go and look at those, that financial transaction. But financial statement comes at the end of the year. All the payments you are doing, all the revenues you are, you are, you are receiving, at the end of the year, you have to report. To report, you have to prepare a financial statement for the auditors to come and express an opinion to it, but they are not doing that. They are making the payment, receiving revenue, but they are not reporting it as how it should be. So we will not. So we were not able to express an opinion on the financial statement. But we were doing the payment voucher, these are the shortages that they are having. We are reporting that one in the manamela letter. Then maybe a background, this was, I don't know whether, if you will come to that. This has been happening. This has been happening, financial statement. We've been reporting, councils are not preparing financial statement. Until, these are some of the reasons why the office in fact established a unit called Municipal and Area Council to focus on the audit of municipals and area councils. And then we were... We went to National Assembly to discuss about this, because these are the things that have been, you know, featured in audit reports since I was going to school, I can say. They are not preparing finances, they are there. What can we do about it? That's the time, you know, we've been going to the National Assembly with all the councils to see the way forward, because this cannot continue. So the National Assembly come with a cut off there to say, okay, now, because there is no record, for you to prepare a financial statement, there must be records, recorded, and then that is what is going to translate to file. But if the records are, things are done off the book, it's not possible to manufacture figures and present a financial statement. Then they said, to be reasonable, let's just start, give them 2019 as the baseline for them to start preparing financial statement. Then the 2018 figures can be confirmed and then they can use those ones just to manage and then start preparation of financing from 2019. But this was an agreement at the National Assembly. So that's why 2017, 18, you might not see the audit report, but it will just be the manamela letter, yeah.
Thank you. And do you know why it was they couldn't prepare financial statements? Was it, I don't know, administrative issue? Was it lack of staff? What do you know?
Yes, the lack of preparation of financial statement. I will start with, I would say, is maybe capacity issue. And then again, lack of proper oversight. Lack of proper oversight. Because if it is in the law that you should prepare a financial statement at the end of every year, and you are not doing it once, you are not doing it twice, three years, then I think that is because maybe you are... There is no contingency for your action. That's why you continue doing it. And then again, the other thing is, because financial statement, you have finance directors, finance managers at the councils, but these are somebody finance that are financial statement, financial managers. You ask them, what is a financial statement? They don't even know what a financial statement is all about. Thinking maybe to be an accountant is just to pay salary, collect revenue, deposit in the bank, and then it's going beyond that. This is what has been happening at the council, and it is still happening. Though there is improvement, because now at least they are presenting something that we can scrutinize and express an opinion.
So then let me now ask you, what is the financial statement?
Say that again?
What is the financial statement?
Yeah, the financial statement is... This shows the financial position and performance of any institution. So the financial statement comprises of, you have three different sets, different component. You have the balance sheet. Financial statement is a general name. You have the balance sheet. The balance sheet will show the assets and liabilities of the institution. And then you have the income and expenditure. That will show the revenue and the expenditures of the councils. Depending for councils and then the notes to the accounts. As far as the operation of the councils is concerned, the balance sheet and the income and expenditure is what they are required to prepare, to show the assets and liabilities and then the income and expenditure, and the notes, the explanatory notes, that will show the details of each and every transaction to inform the readers. This is the financial position of the council at this point in time.
Thank you. And this was happening for all the councils? Or was it maybe those in the regions?
If you, when I... This was, I can say, was happening for all the council. I think the only council that was attempting, striving was KMC. Try to, was KMC. But the rest, they were not preparing financial statement. But from 2019 to today, they are all, at least, they are attempting to prepare something. That was because of our series of follow up and concern at the National Assembly.
Thank you. Let me show you some other reports. Please identify those documents.
Final manamela letter for the Mansa Konko area council for the period 2017 and 2018, signed by myself on behalf of the auto general. And you have the audit of Mansa Konko area council for the period 1st January 2019 to 31st December 2019, signed by myself on behalf of the auditor general. So that's why, if you look at any period from 2019, it will be like January to December, because financial statements are prepared yearly. And then, but before that, maybe it can just be at the middle of the month, 2017 or... Because there is no financial statement, so we just audit the transaction. Wherever we stop, the next month, we start from there and then continue.
Thank you. Chairperson, I'd like to tender the documents that have been identified by the witness.
The Mansa Konko management letter audit performed for the year 2017 and 2018, financial year, with reference number HC/93/470/01, Part IV, Volume 2, is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as The audit report for Mansa Konko area council for the period 1st January 2019 to 31st December 2019, with reference number HC/93/470/01, Part IV, Volume 7, dated the 8th of October 2021, is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as
As a commission please. I'm going to show you some further reports.
Manamela letter, audit performed for the period 1st January to 31st December 2018, financial year for Janjamburi area council. Yes, was signed by myself on behalf of the auto general. Audit report and final manamela letter, audit of Janjamburi area council for the period 1st January 2019 to 31st December 2020, signed by one of the staff on my behalf for the auditor general.
Thank you. Chairperson, I'd like to tender the documents that have been identified by the witness.
The management letter audit performed for the period 1st January to 31st of December 2018, financial year, with reference number HC/93/469/01, Part III, Volume 13, and dated the... Dated the 1st of April 2020, is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as The audit report and final management letter, audit of Janjamburi area council for the period 1st January 2019 to 31st December 2020, with reference number HC/93/469/01, Part III, Volume 24, dated the 28th of October 2022, is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as
As a commission please. Mr. Travelli, please look at this report for Banjo City Council.
Audit report and final manamela letter, audit of Banjo City Council for the year ended 31st December 2019 and 2020, signed by myself on behalf of the auto general.
Is there a management letter for 2018?
31st December, this is 2019 and 2020.
Yes, but would there be one for... I mean, not the audit report, but would there be a management letter for 2018?
It's audit report and manamela letter and final manamela. So it's two. They are both in one, yeah.
And it's for which period, 2019 and 2020?
2019, 2020.
So that's what I'm asking. Is there something, is there a management letter for the 2017, 2018 period? Not in that document?
No, not here. This is 2019, 2020 report. There should be a report for 2018, 2017 and 2018.
Okay, could you check for us when you get back and see if you have it?
That hasn't been checked yet, right?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I will check.
Thank you. Chairperson, I'd like to tender the document that has been identified by the witness.
Very well, council.
Report and final management letter for Banjo City Council for the years ended 31st December 2019 and 2020, respectively, with reference number HC/93/474/01, Part IV, Volume 17, dated the 9th of September 2022, is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as
As a commission please, as agreed for. Mr. Travelli, you, rather, your office prepared a system audit for Basai area council in 2023.
Twenty?
A system audit, well, for the period 1st January 2020 to 30th September 2022, but it was finalized in 2023.
Oh, not our office, is the Internal Audit Directorate.
Okay.
Yeah, but we are copied. You know, internal audit, they copy us in their report, so we are copied.
Okay, so that's the internal audit department of the council?
No, this is the... You have a department, you have a directorate called the Internal Audit Directorate under Minister of Finance. Yeah, that's a directorate. They are the one requested, because this was a special request from the council and then Internal Audit Directorate conducted the audit and then copied us. But when we are... Currently, we are also working on that report. But we use their report, we work with them when we are also conducting our own audit and finalizing our report.
But do you know why there was a special request for the audit to be conducted?
Yes, the auditor general. Thank you so much. The... There was an allegation of suspected fraud by the Basai area council. And they requested, they sent a notification to the Ministry of Local Governments through the Governance Directorate, who requested for the internal audit of the Ministry of Finance, the Directorate of Internal Audit Administration, to conduct that special audit to, in response to those allegations. That was how the report came about.
And who made the report? The Basai area council itself?
No, it was the Directorate of Internal Audit Staff who were dispatched from the Ministry of Finance's Internal Audit Directorate unit. This is a centralized government internal audit service for the government of the Gambia. It is administratively under the Ministry of Finance, but it has a coverage for the entire government, including the Ministry of Local Government and its subsentities.
Thank you. So, but what I actually wanted to know, or rather, I tried to say was, you said that a report was made through the Directorate of Governance to the Directorate of Internal Audit by the council. So who, is it the area council itself that initiated the steps for the report to be made, for the audit to be conducted?
Yes, somehow, the area council initiated the requests for the audit. And that is very normal. If the management of any particular entity have some suspicions, they could request for an audit to be conducted. This is part of the responsibilities or the duties of enshrined in the charter of the internal audit, where requests could be sent for them to follow up and do a special audit. It is, they have two main responsibilities, assurance services and consulting or advisory services. Assurance services, when the auditors themselves initiate, the intention to go and conduct the audit, and they go and conduct the audit. Consulting services is when the requests come from the management or another entity for them to go and conduct the audit. But in all cases, it's the auditors that will write the report and do the audit and execute it and report it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Travelli, please look at these reports and identify them.
Audit of Kerwan area council for the years ended 31st December 2018 and 2019, signed by myself for the auto general. Audit of Kerwan area council, audit report and final manamela letter for the years ended 31st December 2020 and 31st December 2021, signed by myself on behalf of the auto general.
Thank you. Chairperson, I'd like to tender the reports that have been identified by the witness.
Well done.
The audit report of Kerewan Area Council for the years ended thirty-first December twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, with reference number HC nine three slash four seven two slash zero one, part three, volume four, dated the twenty-eighth of April twenty twenty-one, is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as AR slash KAC slash zero zero one. The audit report of Kerewan Area Council, the audit report and final management letter for the years ended thirty-first December twenty twenty and thirty-first December twenty twenty-one, with reference number HC nine three slash four seven two slash zero one, part three, volume eight, and dated thirteenth of April twenty twenty-three, is hereby marked, hereby admitted in evidence and marked as AR slash KAC slash zero zero two.
As the Commission pleases. Mr. Trawali, please look at these reports for Basse.
Management letter, audit performed for the twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen final year for Basse Area Council, was signed by myself on behalf of the Auditor General. Audit of Basse Area Council for the year ended thirty-first December twenty nineteen, signed by myself on behalf of the Auditor General.
Thank you. Chairperson, I'd like to tender the reports for Basse Area Council.
The audit report for Basse Area Council for the year ended thirty-first December twenty nineteen, with reference number HC nine three slash four seven one slash zero one, part two, volume forty-one, dated the sixth of May twenty twenty-one, is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as AR slash BSC slash zero zero one. The, the audit report and management letter performed for the year twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, financial year, with reference number HC nine three slash four seven one slash zero one slash part two, volume thirty-three, and dated the twenty first of June twenty nineteen, is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as AR slash BSC slash zero zero two.
As the Commission pleases. Madam Chair, subject to what the Commission has to say, I believe this would be a convenient point to pause for our first break.
Very well, Council. It's almost twelve, it is five minutes to twelve, we can come back at half twelve after the tea break.
Very well.
So thank you so much, Mr. Sisi and Mr. Trawali. So we see you back in this hall at twelve-thirty. Thank you so much. We can rise.